So, we are moving forward with the recommendation for the approval of the Performance-Based Superintendent's Contract. And first, I would like to call on Rick Schuler to review the search process that we've undergone over the last two years.
Sure, I'd be glad to. The first thing I'd like to say is, I think I speak for everyone in being very pleased with the process from start to finish. There was, I think justifiably, some trepidation, that there'd be some hiccups, maybe disagreements. But in summary, from start to finish, I think everybody on both boards was very pleased with the process itself. It started with us hiring an executive search firm to guide us through the whole process. We did have the services of School Exec Connect. The first thing they did, which I thought was a great idea, was polling the community for feedback on what they were looking for. That included staff and community members. That was rather extensive, and all that information was, of course, shared with the members of each school board. After that, the search firm spent time going through roughly 100 candidates. So this was a wide search. It wasn't just in the local area or the state of Illinois, it was a countrywide search. 100 candidates were narrowed down to six to 10 candidates over time, at which point their resumes were presented to a meeting with the joint boards. Six to 10 candidates were narrowed down to six candidates, after which we spent time as a group discussing each of the candidates at length. The goal of that was to narrow it down to three candidates. After a lot of discussion, good discussion, I will add, we decided, sort of at the last minute, to be a little flexible, and we narrowed it down to four rather than three. That proved to be good, and that was done because of, I would say, the variety of candidates. We wanted to make sure that we had a good representation of potential candidates to the community before we narrowed it down further. Once we narrowed it down to three, there were second interviews conducted by each of the boards. And also, at the same time, as a lot of you know, there were meetings throughout the day with staff members, teachers, community members, with students in the district, without students in the district. The point being that feedback was attained by a wide group of people representing the school and the community. All of that feedback, and by the way, that was more than 50 people. That feedback was actually recorded in sheets, and then reviewed by the board members before their next interview with each of those candidates. So if I go back to the beginning, this is somewhat of an iterative process. We're narrowing it down, let me step back. We're getting what the community's looking for. We're looking at 100 candidates, we're narrowing it down to six to 10, and then to six. More interviews, then getting more community feedback, and going back and talking amongst ourselves. So by looping back, I think the decision not only was a better decision, but better represented what everybody was looking for. So again, we saw the notes from the community group and the staff group, you know, 50 people, and we have that in our minds as we're interviewing them again. Eventually, it was, of course, narrowed down to one person. At that point, the process still wasn't over. We followed up with reference checks, extensive reference checks, I think a dozen or so. We then, of course, had to have the contract negotiated. That was led by our attorney, Mike Hernandez, along with a small subgroup. Then we also broke out teams to take on certain tasks. Job description for the new superintendent. Compensation study. So before the actual contract was negotiated, we had a lot of data put together on comparable districts and how their superintendents were paid. Not just the amount, but how, benefits, et cetera. So we're not making, the negotiation on the terms and salary was not done in a vacuum. It was done with supporting information. Reference checks, and then there was a subgroup doing the negotiation, but we then had everybody, all 14 board members, get together and talk about what was negotiated and what we would agree to and not agree to. And that leads us to here.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Jeff Penderzky. If you could give a description of the Shared Services Agreement?
Thanks, Julia. The introduction to Shared Services. So the boards of District 67 and 115 are contemplating sharing a superintendent under the Shared Service Agreement that employs Dr. Griffith and a number of other district employees today. I'll provide two brief reports on Shared Services this evening as background for the contract discussion that'll follow a little bit later in the meeting. The first is an introduction to Shared Services, which is posted on the District 67 website. And second is a description of how Shared Services currently works in the district and the finances associated with it. So here's what's on the website, and it provides just a little bit of helpful background. "On July 20th, 2004, Lake Forest District 67 and 115 entered into a Shared Services Agreement for the purposes of strengthening the coordination of educational programs from kindergarten through the 12th grade, and improving operational efficiency through sharing administrative personnel, combining purchasing power and economies of scale. Though through Shared Services, the districts have remained independent and autonomous. Each maintains its own Board of Education, tax base, and budget. Dr. Griffith was appointed superintendent for both, and was initially the only Shared Service employee. Over the years, the number of Shared Services personnel has grown, and will be outlined later in this report. Dr. Griffith and all other Shared Services personnel are accountable to District 7 for District 67 operations, and accountable to District 15 for District 115 operations. As part of the Shared Services Agreement, a Joint Shared Services Committee, JSSC, comprised of Dr. Griffith and representatives from each Board of Education was formed to oversee Shared Services. The committee has and continues to recommend coordinate and monitor components of Shared Services proposals from each Board of Education. In addition to sharing some personnel, the districts share a common administrative center, that's where we are here, and have worked together on the acquisition of contracted services such as cleaning, auditing, appraising, and appraising. The districts jointly researched, purchased, and shared common financial and personnel software, facility scheduling software, and a common telephone system. The savings derived from these initiatives are not quantified in this report, but that's the next page." So currently, there are approximately 17 people who are shared between the districts in the following functional areas. Finance, including payroll, accounts payable, banking relationship and audit services, building and grounds, transportation services, curriculum development, maintenance, and performance measurement, special education services, communication and information technology, and telecommunications. Over the past seven and a half years, this arrangement has saved the two districts approximately $6.8 million, 3.4 in savings for District 67. Currently, Shared Services saves District 67 about $600,000 per year. So it's under this arrangement that the board is contemplating hiring its new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. That brings us to the compensation comparatives, and Bill Anderson.
Thanks, Julia. Our committee looked at publicly available information about superintendent compensation in 18 comparable school districts, which we selected mostly based on high academic achievement. I'm going to go through the major terms of the contract, to give you an idea of how it compares to our study. In the proposed contract, the base salary before the two districts stipend is generally in line with the peer group, which I mean it's within 1% of the median. After the stipend, it's slightly above the peer group, but since the cost of the agreement is spread over two districts, as Jeff said, both districts are arguably getting a good deal. For example, if the base salary is $220,000, each district would only pay half that amount, or $120,000. $110,000, I took math a bit ago. $110,000, which is less than the amount for which either district could hire a superintendent of reasonable quality. The proposal does not contain some of the perks seen in some other superintendent contracts. There is a basic car allowance of $500 per month, which is in line with the peer group. There's also a provision for repurchase of up to 10 vacation days per year, in the first year, which in reality is an additional form of compensation. There's also a provision for the superintendent to do some outside consulting, but on his own vacation time. Stipend. Due to the unique Shared Service Agreement in our district, there are not meaningful comps for the two districts stipend. Consequently, this amount is more a function of internal discussion. Board members generally agree that some additional compensation is appropriate for the extra work in overseeing two districts. Presumably, if there were no additional compensation, highly qualified candidates would prefer to work in settings where they were only responsible for a single district. It's also felt that the unique nature of Shared Services gives the districts the ability to pay slightly above market in order to attract and retain outstanding personnel while still saving money. This is the long-term benefit of Shared Services, which both districts enjoy. As for the specific amount, it could be said, depending on the position, a stipend between 10 and 25% may be appropriate, although this amount may change over time. The proposed stipend of $30,000 is within that range, albeit at the higher end. This contract is similar to others in the peer group, in that there's not a provision which strongly links performance to compensation. I find this very disappointing, and it's really the sole reason I don't support the contract. In sum, the contract proposed is generally in line with the superintendent contracts for our peer districts, with the stipulation that with the two districts stipend, it's slightly above the peer group. Taken as a whole, this contract will allow the two districts to hire an outstanding superintendent, achieve substantial savings versus the retiring superintendent and other districts, while still providing world-class education for our students.
Thank you, Bill. And now, to actually reveal who the candidate is, Leslie Fisher is going to give a biography of the candidate.
I would like to say, too, along the lines of what Mr. Schuler said earlier, this was a process that I really felt privileged to be a part of, working alongside administration, all the parents who gave of their time so generously. This was not a small undertaking, and of course, working with the District 115 Board, too. Lake Forest High School District 115 and Lake Forest Elementary School District 67 are pleased to announce the selection of Michael Simic as Superintendent of Schools for both school districts effective July 1st, 2012. Mr. Simic was selected using a collaborative interviewing process, as we have discussed, involving parents, teachers, staff, administration, and community and school board members representing both districts. Michael Simic received a BA from Eastern Michigan University, an MA in Educational Leadership from Eastern Michigan University, and is completing a PhD in Educational Administration at Michigan State University. Mr. Simic currently serves as the Superintendent of Schools for the Berkeley K-12 School District in Oak Park, Michigan, and has been serving there since 2007. He previously served as Superintendent of Schools in Dansville, Michigan, from 2003 through 2007. Mr. Simic has demonstrated his belief that the superintendent should be the learning leader of the school. He was selected to participate in the Fulbright Administrative Exchange in Peterborough, England, served as a Fulbright English Assistant, was awarded a Gerta Institute Scholarship and Grant from the National Endowment for the Humanities. We look forward to welcoming the Simic family to our community. They have three school-aged children. A daughter who will be entering 5th grade in the fall, a son who will be a freshman in high school, and another daughter who will be beginning her junior year. We are excited for our greater community to have the opportunity to meet Mr. Simic. In early March, he will be here to tour our schools, meet with our staff, and we will host a reception in order for parents and other community members to meet him. Specific details regarding dates and times will be released as they become available. There are a few individuals tonight who I see out here who graciously gave of their time to serve on some of the committees. And if you have any additional thoughts you'd like to share at this time, we welcome you to share them.
Hi, I'm Missy Berger. Along with being a concerned parent, I had the Spirit of 67 Foundation. That is the fundraising arm of the District 67 APT. First, I want to thank the Board of Education for creating such a collaborative process for the superintendent. I was part of some parent groups in addition to this final interview group. We interviewed the four last candidates, and we were comprised of a variety of stakeholders. We had parent group activists, teachers, and community members at large. After our first interview, our group commented that we didn't know how we were going to choose if all four candidates were as good as the first. Then came the second, who was equally qualified, the third, and the fourth. But at the end of the week, there was one that stood out. Michael Simic was our unanimous first choice. We were looking for someone who would honor the traditions and our history, yet bring a fresh, new perspective. In his present district, he gave examples of collaboration and commented that he couldn't take credit for creating some of the initiatives, but he could take credit for extending them. And we thought that was very interesting. Additionally, we were looking for someone who was aware of current curriculums and teaching philosophies such as the 21st Century Learning and the Immersion Mandarin Program, both of which he is familiar. He was the only candidate to truly satisfy our desire for concrete answers to our questions with examples. He showed a genuine enthusiasm for kids. He stated that he doesn't just have three kids in the district that he serves, he has 4,138. And he strives to get the "no" to kids and spend time in the classrooms. "I like kids," is what he said, "and I get energy from them, they're underestimated." From the community, we were looking for someone who would be involved and interact. Michael shared examples of using his time in the classroom with the children so he could share the story of what was going on in the schools with outside groups like Rotary. He knows his job as superintendent is about relationships as much as it is the day-to-day facilitation. Michael had an energy and an ease, a real presence at our interview. When we were nearing the end of the time with him, he turned the tables on us and asked what we would like to keep, stop, and start, which made us all think a little deeper. From the questions about teacher collaboration, philosophies on budget reductions, strategic planning, balancing performance and pressure, he answered with examples, showing his character, professionalism, knowledge, human humor, and shared vision. I am personally thrilled to welcome him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Nemecus. I am the District 67 Executive APT President, and I reiterate everything that Missy Berger said, I can't really say it any better. It was an honor and a privilege to be included in this process. Our group was made up of teachers, administrators, custodial staff, community members, and parents, all looking to fill their desires and needs in a new superintendent. And the process was thoughtful and respectful, and it mattered to us to be able to get our voice out there, and I really feel like we were heard, which made a difference. Our group met initially before any of the interviews started, and we developed, we ranked in order of importance the topics that we wanted to cover. We felt like we wanted to ask the same questions to each candidate in order to really compare them fairly. And from that point, after ranking the topics, we then ranked the questions, and each person on our committee was able to ask a question and participate. Mr. Simic answered our questions thoughtfully and thoroughly, he was engaging, and he knew a lot about our community already, which made him stand out, I guess. He was the first person to come in and not just seem excited about the job, but excited about our community and knew what was going on. As we continued to ask questions, he often referenced back to former questions, looking the person in the eye who originally asked that question. He just wowed us all, and again, for our group, he was the end-all and be-all. We were so excited. So thank you for listening to us, and thank you for including us in the process. I think everyone in the community will be very happy with this decision.
Thank you very much. Thanks for taking the time to share your thoughts with us tonight, and all the time you've put into interviewing. Next, we come to a description of the Performance-Based Contract, and John Julian.
Yes, good evening. I'm going to give a summary of the contract that we are proposing to give to Mr. Simic. And before I do so, I think it's key to keep in mind that we have a unique situation here in Lake Forest, as you may be aware of. We have one superintendent actually serving two districts. And in order to do that, the superintendent actually has to be the employee and contracted only to one district. And the contract is going to be with District 67, as it was with Dr. Griffith. There is an ancillary agreement, which Julie will get into in a little bit, which supplements the agreement I'm going to talk to you about. So there is additional terminology that we reflect on in that agreement. This is the agreement, though, he's a direct employee with 67, and the summary I'd have would be about that agreement. I'd also like to say that mere presentation of a contract really belies all the work that has gone into the negotiation of a contract. There were a lot of people involved for a good period of time, going back and forth with Mr. Simic on various points in this contract. And merely stating what the summary is really doesn't do justice to all the work that was involved there. There are certainly, contracts are going to be born of compromise, and there are certainly individual elements to a contract that anyone can second-guess. But keep in mind, it was done as a whole, and the entire contract, it is our belief, is certainly an equitable contract, both to the board and to the candidate. As Julie had indicated, this is a performance-based contract. The term of the contract, it's a three-year term. It's July 1st, 2012, through June 30th, 2015. Being a performance-based contract, we have to establish goals for the superintendent to follow. We established four initial goals, keeping in mind that this is a new relationship here. So we're going to be developing and learning both he, as to our districts, and us as to him. The four goals that we have put into his contract. First goal, there is a recent law passed in Illinois, a couple of years ago. The Article 24A of the Illinois School Board. This article requires a certain process to be implemented in all the school districts in Illinois to objectively evaluate school district employees. Now, every district is going to have to put together their own program to try and comport with this law. Goal number one is, by the September board meeting, Mr. Simic is to present a plan to implement the evaluation requirements of this article to the board. Goal number two, on July 1st, Mr. Simic is going to be presenting a 100-day plan, which will outline his approach to better know and understand District 67, which would include, of course, all the students, people involved, our programs. That will be his plan coming on into this district, how he intends to get to know our district better. Article, or goal three, there, as you may know, there are a number of critical vacancies, personnel decisions that have to be made within our own district. We are asking him to immediately address the critical vacancies and the performance concerns that we may have in the district. Goal four, by October 1st of this year, we are asking Mr. Simic to work with the board to develop goals and priorities for the remainder of the fiscal 2013 year. This will involve assessing key personnel, student achievement, and to present a strategic plan going forward, trying to address the concerns that are raised in that report. Now, as I mentioned, these are preliminary goals, because we're both in a learning process. We have also provided in the contract that these goals are to be reviewed and modified by the board, if necessary, by October 1st of this year. So there will be an evaluation revision as this contract progresses. Compensation. The compensation for Mr. Simic is a base salary of $220,000. We include in the compensation, there will be a Teacher Retirement System, TRS, contribution, paid for by the board, that's into the teacher's retirement system. There are 22 vacation days, which we will allow him the first year only to, if he does not use them, he may sell up to 10 back to the board. That's for the first year only of the contract. The sick pay and personal days are going to be the same as are allowed to teachers and the administrative staff of District 67. There will be a life insurance policy for $750,000. Mr. Simic is not going to be taking any health insurance at this point from our district. Although, what we are going to do, in lieu of that, we have agreed to make an annual $20,000 contribution to a retirement plan. To the degree that Mr. Simic in the future may decide that he wants the coverage that our health plans would provide, we would agree to reduce, not agree, we would reduce the amount of that contribution to his retirement plan by the amount that it costs to bring him into our plan. Mr. Simic will be having an annual comprehensive medical exam, paid for by the board, and reported back to the board. He will have moving expenses to relocate his family here to Illinois, not to exceed $15,000, and that will be obtained by having a, he will give us three quotes of moving companies to allow him to give us a quote on that. He will have an automobile expense reimbursement of $500 a month, up to $500 a month. This is a reimbursement. There is a last component to the contract. Mr. Simic is, as we've just heard from Leslie, he's coming from Michigan. He is three years from retirement in the Michigan retirement system, from vesting in their retirement system. As part of the negotiations, he asked if we would essentially loan him the money to buy out his remaining three years, so that he could vest in his Michigan retirement system. We agreed to do that. Therefore, there will be a payment, a direct payment made by the district through the Michigan School Employees Retirement System for $99,500. This will be paid back to the district by Mr. Simic over the three years of the term of the contract. If there is an earlier termination, that will accelerate, and he will pay the entire amount back. These are the components of the contract he has with the district. And as I state, this was really born out of a lot of hard work with a lot of people, a lot of comparisons. And we feel, at the end of the day, we have done a fair job for the people in the community, as well as, we feel it's an equitable package to Mr. Simic. Julia?
Thank you very much, board members. Do we have any further discussion on the contract, or the process? Okay. May I have a motion that the Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education approve the Performance-Based Multi-Year Superintendent's Employment Agreement with Michael Simic, in substantially the form as is attached here, too, as in substantially the form as is attached heretofore as Exhibit A, and authorize the Board President to execute the same?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Lori, we need your vote on the Michael Simic's contract. Lori would like to make a statement explaining her vote. Okay, I'm going to put you up to the mic.
Okay, thanks.
Can you hear that? Okay.
Okay. Alfred North Whitehead, taught philosophy at Harvard, observed that we think in generalities, but we live in details. As a Board Member, I have unfortunately come to conclude that I cannot accept the details contained in the proposed superintendent's contract as presented this evening. At the outset, I would like to mention that I personally was not part of the legal and negotiating team for the execution version of these documents, and I came to learn only this evening that the documents that we're approving are not even the actual execution documents, but substantially in the form of the documents that might be approved. The work that was done when negotiating was done solely by the JSFC, which delegated the work to Julia Wald and Sharon Gola. I would also like to debate that I'd hope to vote in favor of a contract which would reflect the expectations of four diligent, sorry, fourteen diligent Board members, teachers, community members, and administrators. Unfortunately, this was not to be. My objections center around the core issues of accountability and appropriate compensation, values which are central to my views as a Board Member. In the interest of time, for the sake of simplicity, I'll refer to the documents this evening as the proposed contract and highlight some discrete examples which form the basis for my views in accompanying vote. The proposed contract indicates the new superintendent will collaborate with the Board to develop goals. I believe that the authority to set the goals of the superintendent should lie clearly and solely to the Board. The proposed contract contains no remedy for superintendent's failure to collaborate. Furthermore, conditions of dismissal or discharge, both for cause and for other reasons, are not clearly defined by the proposed contract. Here is also in the contract the details failed to provide our district with what I consider to be adequate protection. Thus, under the proposed contract terms, the superintendent could refuse the goals proposed by the Board and proceed to earn in excess of three years of compensation plus associated legal fees. This figure could be increased exponentially if the candidate engaged in litigation about whether or not a termination was for cause. The proposed contract refers to superintendent as a CEO. The CEO contract, conditions for dismissal and termination, both for cause and nonrenewal, are clearly articulated in typical purposes. As our Board is only too keenly aware, the standards for personnel retention, promotion at every level of the district should be clearly articulated and appropriately enforced. I feel that details of the present contract are not responsive to this community and Board concern. While the contract is entitled a performance-based contract, which is required under Illinois for multi-year contracts, the document contains no appropriate measures of performance for our highest-stated employees. Given that Illinois laws passed in 2010 and 2011 mandate specific criteria for performance evaluations for teachers and principals, it's clear that the compensation of our highest employees must be legally tied to measurable performance indicators that the outset of the contract is troubling. Although the contract does contain vague references to future performance indicators such as student performance and achievement, this performance-based standard is a state-mandated standard, and would be more aptly applied to a district in which underachievement is an ongoing issue. As written, the proposed contract allows the Board to evaluate the superintendent, provided the superintendent notifies the Board in January of each contract year. Thus, this draft is the evaluation of performance for the highest-compensated employee, not specifically contractually mandated by the Board, but rather by the option of the superintendent. I find this drafting unacceptable, both in form and substance. Another troubling detail concerns the contract language. For example, the contract fails to stipulate a basis for termination events related to the superintendent's obligation to serve as a role model for the district. I'd like to point out that the CEO of the New York City School System, who supervises 1 million students, receives a base compensation of $250,000. Here, we're proposing the same rate of pay, justified in part by the concept of shared services for supervision of a district with just 4,000 students. Given the generosity of the proposed compensation we're offering, which, unlike teachers and principals in the district, will not be tied to performance measures, I cannot sanction the addition of proposed language, authorizing consulting work solely upon approval of the Board President or payment for unused sick days. These examples demonstrate what I believe to be a lack of accountability and appropriate fiscal providing, and, along with other examples, form the basis of my vote against the proposed contract as presented. Finally, I would urge myself, Board members, to return to the table and try to remedy these issues as soon as possible. Thank you.
Did you officially vote? I don't believe you did.
I vote no.
She votes no. Thank you. Okay. Is that it? Okay, motion carries, five to two. And now, this brings us to the delineating agreement. And the delineating agreement is the agreement by which the two districts share the superintendent, or in essence, District 67 allows him to also work for District 115. The one substantive difference in this delineating agreement from our prior delineating agreement was that back when we first began shared services eight years ago, there was concern that it would unravel, and that then Harry Griffith would have returned to work only for District 67 if it was not working out at District 115. The difference now is that Michael Simic specifically interviewed to come here and to serve both districts. He did not interview with one versus the other, so he is looking to come here and serve both District 115 and District 67. So the delineating agreement, therefore, links the two districts together in sharing the superintendent for its term or for three years. And in addition, then, it does pay the superintendent $30,000 for the shared services compensation. So of that, $15,000 would be paid by District 115, and $15,000 will be paid by District 67. It also specifies that all the salary components that are paid to the superintendent will be shared equally between both districts. Any questions regarding the delineating agreement? Seeing none. May I have a motion that the Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education approve the agreement delineating compensation and responsibilities of the superintendent under an intergovernmental agreement for the utilization of shared service with Lake Forest High School District 115 and Michael Simic in substantially the form as is attached heretofore as Exhibit B, and authorize the Board President to execute the same? So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzky?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mrs. Rose?
Lori, I need your vote on the delineating agreement.
Aye.
He votes aye. Motion carries, seven to zero. Okay. And I believe that concludes our meeting this evening. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Is there no public comment?
There was public comment before we went into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.